My name is Jerry Adams, I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Cadillac. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. I do, if you would be so kind, I do have a sign-in sheet, name, address. You want to put an email on there, please do it. Just if you pass them around, we just would like to keep a log of who's here. And we may or may not have some additional information in the future that if we need to send out, we've got your addresses. The purpose of tonight's workshop is not to talk about a particular development. Rather, it's to talk about, you know, is there a demand? Is there a need for additional commercial development in the greater Cadillac area? Is there a need or a demand for outlying commercial development? That is, development outside the core downtown. And if there is a need or a demand, what are the relationships? What are the impacts, potential impacts of outlying commercial development on the downtown? And what about the downtown? What are some things we might do to make sure that it maintains its health or improves its health and vitality? And so, we've got to be helpful to bring in someone who I've known for many, many years and who's very familiar with the Cadillac area. Howard Cohen. Howard is the President of the Chesapeake Group. They're located in Baltimore, Maryland. Howard's firm does work essentially just about all over the US east of the Mississippi River. Once in a while they'll go, but very seldom. And including Michigan. In fact, when he gets up and starts his presentation, I'd ask him to just maybe highlight some of the projects that he's working on right now in Michigan. I did include in your agenda packet, it was the flyer that was posted for tonight's work session. Just a little flyer, a page on some of the professional services that his firm provides. And then lastly, just a listing of some of his municipal clients, his firm's municipal clients where they've done economic development consulting. Just to give you an idea of the breadth and range of those clients. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Howard. He's going to give a presentation. Hopefully, you can see it all on the monitors. And then following the presentation, he'll open it up for questions and comments from you. And then by 7:00, okay, I'm going to pull the rug or the nukes or whatever. We're going to be out of here by 7:00. I promise folks that we get out of here by 7:00, so I'm sure to do that. So Howard, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Chair. First, welcome. Second of all, so I don't look like my picture, okay? So let me get that out of the way right away. My wife told me for the last 20 years, "That's not your picture," right? And I just don't never do it. So it is what it is. We, as Jerry said, we've done an extensive amount of work in Michigan over the years. Right now, we have projects in, to the northwest of you, in the Charlotteville area. We're doing a couple of projects for them right now. We have a project, I don't know if any of you are familiar with, Canadian Lakes area, which is just, you know, a little bit over to this side of you. We have projects in Ada Township right now. And we have projects in Delhi Charter Township. And then moving over to the east side, we have projects on the east side of the state as well. And those are our current projects. We've done a lot of work in this particular area from everywhere, from Turtle Creek Casino for private interests in that area, all the way up to the Mackinac Tourism Area and their efforts up in that area. And just all over the place, a lot of work in Grand Rapids over the years, et cetera. So we know the area quite well. We've done some work here in Cadillac as well. So we're very, very familiar with what's going on. I'm going to remove us for a moment from, but it's not really from Cadillac. And I want to talk about what we would call mega trends, things that are happening out there. They had a direct impact on Cadillac, the rest of the United States, on the development industry, on where we're going from an economic standpoint in the future. And everybody's got one or more screens, which is easy for them to look at. And there's things that are changing us very quickly. Birth, fertility, marriage rates are the lowest in our history. And there's been some minor uptick, but it's nowhere near where it used to be. That means that the household is changing, okay? It used to be, when I was growing up, that, you know, the typical was four people, right? There was a husband and a wife and a couple of kids. That household is well the minority of the population in this country at this point in time. So, you know, it really doesn't exist as kind of a myth at this point in time. Second of all, delayed household creation. People, and particularly people who get an education, whether if they live here and decide to stay in the Cadillac area or they go somewhere else afterwards, are, if they get married, they're getting married later. If they have children, they're having them later. So their household is being created. And in some cases, when the economy was really bad, they stayed at home and just lived there, even though they were painfully employed, et cetera, because they couldn't afford to move out. So that has had an impact as well. Third, we have an aging population. The fastest-growing component of our population at this point in time, believe it or not, as a percentage, not necessarily in total numbers, but as a percentage, is your population over 70 years of age. Okay, your second most rapid-growing group is the people that are called, quote-unquote, "The Baby Boomers," okay? The people who are in their 50s or 60s. You have a third emerging group, which is very, very strong, and that is, they got all kinds of names for them. And I'm not babbling on the jargon stuff, but the people who are reaching their 20s to about 30, 33, 35 years of age. And they are growing. They are the ones who are forming new households to a large extent. And they're different than us before, than other populations. And if you look, the word "movement" is up there, okay? Whichever screen you want to look at. Again, I'd like to understand, I put them in... I've got two sons, okay? They've had more jobs in their short lifetime, and each one has been for a better than I had in my whole life. And they moved around. They've lived in Atlanta, they've lived in... They don't live in Baltimore, where I'm from originally, where family's been there for five generations. They've moved beyond that, they keep moving. Now, that has an implication. That has an implication on the housing market. Do you want to buy a home if you think you're only going to be someplace for two or three or four years? No, you want to rent. So that generation is more increasingly and increasingly oriented towards rental units, to being in an area for a while, then I might decide to move on to get a better job or another job somewhere else after that. The growth in the internet. Any of us that are in business or any of us that are residents that shop, okay? We know that things have changed. It's not like it was 10 years ago. It's the fastest-growing component of the retail market. It is also providing us with unlimited knowledge. You know, we joke, you know, you can Google it, right? You can do anything you want, could find out almost anything you want, and fortunately or unfortunately, instantaneously. You know, the information is out there. And so, it's having a tremendous impact and going to continue to have an impact on us. The emerging technology. Manufacturing is changing in this country since the Great Recession. 70% of all manufacturing jobs that have been created have been with firms that have 10 or less employees. It's no more the big boys with hundreds and hundreds of employees. It's small operations, why? And what you're also finding very quickly, manufacturing is moving back to the United States. You know how we used to, some jokingly, something upset about it, doesn't matter. You say, "Everything we buy is over from China," okay? Soon, everything you buy practically is going to be made here in the United States again, okay? Like if one time was. And there's a reason for that, because what has happened is, we've replaced employment with technology. So the closer you are to the markets you're serving, the better off you are. Second of all, we're moving towards what's called on-demand production. That's not where, you know, somebody farms something else so they can get the product. It means this shirt that I have on, I'm no longer going to go into a store and have to look to see if it's a 16 or 16 and a half or whatever neck collar I have fits me. And this arm, it's going to be made to fit for me. I mean, they pick the cloth out of the store, but it's going to be made to fit for me. Some people will say, "Well, this is pie in the stock." No, it's not. It's happening very, very quickly, okay? And this is going to return opportunities all over this country and opportunities for growth in the manufacturing industry. And we have new materials. I don't know how many of you may remember, but at one point, you know, God, polyester had this bad name, okay? Now, if you look at all the sports clothing, all the, everything, it's all made out of polyester. Yes, they've refined, they've changed the product. It's no longer a bad thing anymore, okay? It's a good thing. You don't sweat, and if you do, it rolls off of you, you know? All those things that have had a dramatic impact on us are going to continue to. So it's going to change us and continue to change. I'm going to make a statement here that I really want you to remember. I may have to use it again during the presentation. When I grew up, my father taught me there were two things that were unavoidable: death and taxes, okay? And I've learned through my life, there are really three things that are unavoidable: death, taxes, and change. And if we don't do the latter, we might as well do the former, because we're not going to be able to survive in the society that we're in, because it's going to change. It's either going to do it to us or with us. But it's going to change. We can't stop it, okay, from happening. The impacts, okay? So we've got, excuse me, an increased demand for rental units. I mentioned that earlier, okay? Because people don't stay in one place very long. They move and move and move, and particularly the younger population. This has a significant impact, by the way, way beyond the Cadillacs of the world and some of your communities where you have second home markets that are well-known nationally, whether they're in Michigan or elsewhere. They got problems, because this next generation doesn't want anything to do with a house that's been in the family for four years. They don't want the problem with it. They don't want to have to maintain it. They don't care. So it has even a dramatic on a lot of different communities in a lot of different ways. Increased demand for non-single-detached units as well, okay? I'm trying to get rid of the term "single-family unit," because again, the family's changed. It's not who, it's not what it used to look like. So a family today can be one person, it can be two persons, it can be, you know, three different people. It's just very, very different. So the non-single-detached unit, okay, which we used to call the single-family home, there's still great demand for that, as well as for the rental units, which usually are some sort of aggregated housing. The changing business and location landscape, again, I've got to be near my market, okay? Because what I've done is replace labor costs with transportation costs. That's why you're seeing the return of manufacturing, whether if it's GE or the other big companies that are all promoting and advertising, they're moving the stuff back here. It's not because, for altruistic reasons, because it doesn't really matter whether they pay 10 cents an hour or $100 an hour to the one person that they're employing anymore, because it's dropped to a small part of the actual cost of the production at this point in time. And the transportation becomes greater. So if I've got to fly something or send it on a boat from overseas in here to this country, that costs me more, okay? Because the high cost now is not the labor in that, it's the transportation factor. Small business expansion. Lots and lots of small businesses. 70% of all the new jobs that have been created in the industrial sector, which has been our bread and butter for many, many years, and particularly in this community, are in small operations. They can rotate in something that looks like the office we're in here right now, because somewhere in this room, if we were in Jerry's office, there's a printer in there, okay? But it can be a 3D printer, okay? It isn't, you know, it's not printing out paper anymore, it's printing out other things. Changes in spending, in tactical spending. If most people today are spending less and less of the non-necessities, if they have the money to buy non-necessities, they're spending them online. They're spending them in other places other than in their home market. Not necessarily their necessities at this point in time, but their non-necessities, they're buying it online, et cetera. Changes in space needs of the tenants. If I'm a clothing store, I don't care whether, where I'm located, okay? What you'll find is that certain amount of space is going to contract. It's going to continue to track. Again, if I don't need to stock for a men's shirt, 15, 15, yeah, 16, 32-iron, 35-iron, 37-iron, if I don't need to have all that stock on site, the only thing I need is the material, I don't need the same amount of space. Because it's going to be made for me and you'll get it the next day or pick it up the next day. Those kinds of things are changing the space needs. If you look at someone like Myers that you have in your community. I used to buy clothes at Myers, okay? They had their own brand, False Creek, False Church, False Creek, okay? It was their brand. You can't go in there and buy men's clothes anymore. They really don't have any of it left. Very, very little compared to what they used to, because they had seen the change and they're adapting to that change. New opportunities to serve larger markets. Any of you ever go to a site or ever use Etsy, know what it is at all, okay? Well, Etsy really is no different than what Amazon has become, and Etsy is about to become the same thing, okay? Or eBay, okay, which is shifting around as well. Etsy is tiny little producers of arts and crafts all over this country. And they got together and they, you know, somebody bucks more and they formed this site and allows them to promote their products. They could be in New Hampshire, and they're promoting them to you here in Michigan, okay? And you buy it from that person and Etsy makes some money on it. Etsy's about to go public, just like Amazon did, et cetera, so that they can bring in all these resources. There's still that independent operation all over the place. That person from New Hampshire, you would never hear of them. You couldn't buy their product if it wasn't for that activity and that kind of marketing that's being done. So we best provide the opportunity to bring in a larger market. Now, let's move into Cadillac itself. And let's look at what's happened in Cadillac over the years, okay? Because there's a metamorphosis that has happened. At one point in time, Cadillac, like every other community, was very compact. It was very, all the people lived near downtown. There was one commercial area that was downtown. It met all the goods and services needs, because there wasn't the internet, there wasn't this, there wasn't that. It met all the goods and services needs of the entire population. Then the population spread out, okay? And at some point in that spread, the retail which follows and commercial is not a leader, it follows that trend and that pattern. Wherever they think there's some traffic, quote-unquote, generally associated with rooftops or visitors to an area, they're going to go there. It grew and it changed. And a number of years ago, you had something that happened here. You got a number of the, quote-unquote, "box stores" built, okay? That's the buyers of the world, that's the Home Depots of the world. And your downtown took a hit. There is no question that that dynamic changed your downtown area. It changed it forever, okay? And not only in Cadillac, but all over the place. It changed it forever, and you changed. And you changed a lot in that process. And I'll take, you know, one person in the room, he knows who I'm going to use, okay? You know, he has a business. He can't sell at the same volume, at the same price that Home Depot can, let's say, refrigerators or something like that. So he's got an offer of service that they don't, okay? So his business had to change. They had to evolve, okay, in order to be able to live and to continue to prosper. So we had that emergence of the box stores. It already happened here. The hit was already had, okay? It's in your past, and I think that's something that's very, very important. I don't know what's been proposed here. I don't really care. I know what happens at interchanges. I know what happens in areas like this, and I know what has happened here. So that changed your downtown. It changed it forever, but it changed it all over this country, okay? And when I go out to your downtown, whether you believe it or not, okay? You have a very strong, viable downtown right now. It looks great. It is great. The number of vacancies are small compared to many, many places that I've worked over the years. Then, and now, you have that online purchase ability that is emerging as well and continues to emerge. And that has had a change on all of us, okay, in to how we do things. What did we do here? We did something wonderful, okay? And your city fathers, whether it's your elected representatives or, you know, your city leadership from a staff-level position, whomever and collectively, whomever did it with, your business people in the downtown, with your property owners who are down here, with your residents of the community, you reinvested in your downtown. I put up a lot of pictures here. You have a lake, and lakefront that is enjoyable and people choose to do it and will be there for perpetuity, for home and death and purposes. But you know what? You talk about opportunities? I stay at the Hampton Inn when I come into town, okay? Why? Plus it's off of the interchange. And 131 is not part of the interstate system, but it might as well be. It functions the same as the interstate system functions. The only difference is, when they go to rebuild or to approve 131, they only get 70%. The state only gets 70% of the money from the federal government instead of 90%. That's really the only difference. It's a finance formula difference, okay? But it's functioning as an interstate. Heavy traffic volume, moving people through large, vast areas with the opportunity for people to stop in between. I stopped, right? Stayed overnight, Hampton Inn, okay? When I came off that interchange, do you know that I don't even know that there's a lake? I don't know that there is a lakefront park. I don't know, I don't know that there's anything. I think when I get out of that Hampton Inn, this is Cadillac. This is it. So right before your eyes, right now, you have the opportunity to have a market, okay? It's talking with some minor cost, doesn't cost city, anything, working with the state to change that. Now, they're not going to let you put in shopping area, okay? Because that would be competitive, because it's in a different town, in a different area, okay? Different jurisdiction, okay? But the bottom line is, they will do that if there's a lake. They will do it if there's a lakefront, if there is your amphitheater that you built out there, okay? They can publicize all of that and let people know that there's something here. Because right now, I don't know it, if I didn't know it ahead of time. So you put in, you created an environment, and an environment for more investment than you have at this moment in time, in this downtown area. And it was, I mean, you've got shares out there that, you know, made out of, it looks like petrified wood, okay, I'm sure it's just carved or something like that. You've got your, the train situation. You've got new investment proposed right now of at least 300,000 or 350,000?
600,000.
$600,000 right along your waterfront too, so that you can bring more people in here for activities and events. You've got farmers' markets, so you've got, and other events and activities that occur down here. You've got entertainment. Today in downtown, downtowns are about a mixture of services and from a commercial standpoint, it's really restaurant activity mixed with entertainment. That's what happens, because if I want to go out to eat tonight, okay? Or I want to go out someplace to drink tonight and I want green beer, okay? Because it'll be there. I'm not going to go out to a restaurant near where my hotel is, okay? That's part of some national chain. They have their place. That's not where I'm going to go. I'm going to look for a pub, okay? There's a local kind of, quote-unquote, "joint," okay? A local kind of place, where there's going to be some interaction and some excitement going on. That happens in downtown. It doesn't happen in an interchange, almost anywhere in this country. So that's, you know, you've created this atmosphere for this investment kind of thing. You've got wide sidewalks, you've got your amphitheater, you've, you know, you still have a characteristic, some people don't like it, but that train there is cool, okay? The fact that it comes through, it's different. Again, it makes you different. And as I said, you've got a lot more investment even proposed right now for the area. So what does the market say, okay? Big questions. Can there be additions? If there are additions, what's impacted by it, okay? Who's it competition for? Whatever, and I know nothing about anything that has been proposed here whatsoever, but I do know that throughout this country, there are few interchanges unless they're so far from any kind of population center that don't have development around them. They have to really be hanging out there by themselves, okay? So there's, you know, who is it competitive with and what happens at interchanges? Well, we have our own examples here, right? We have seen, again, we saw the emergence of box stores, which are having issues. Them, the malls, Jerry has a copy of, what happened on the newspaper? Did you get it to me? I left it in the...
You have it.
Okay, yeah. Oh, just happened in USA Today yesterday, front page of their money section. "As anchors close, aging malls fizzle," okay? You know, you've got some stores that are going to operate, some that will never operate, but you've got no control over that. It's national decisions. Really doesn't matter what Cadillac has or does with it. So who goes other than in the downtown area? These will not go downtown today. Okay, let's deal with the last one, vehicle dealerships. You have a dealership downtown, okay? It's all, a new dealership will be built in a downtown area, any place in the United States. They take up, they're bigger, they need a lot of space, they serve a very large regional market. It's not what they do. It's, you know, Ford, whether we talk about one in America or Toyota, whomever, they're not going to allow a new dealership to be built in a downtown area with a very constrained kind of situation. It's not, it's not successful for them. Residential commuters, active adult housing, housing development, okay? That doesn't fit neatly somewhere else, because it's too many units or it's too large or it's too different, okay? Where they're trying to enclose it in some way, shape, or form. Transient accommodations, by that I mean hotels. Hotels, a traditional chain, is going to go near where they can draw traffic off that interstate or off of that major highway, period. That's where they're looking. Look at where your hotels that are already here are located to a large extent, okay? They're located near that, and not by chance. Transport-oriented manufacturing, they've got to get right on the highway. Doesn't mean all manufacturing, it means those that are going to be trucking in large amounts and large quantities out. A regional serving, this isn't the Hatton area there, because you already got, but a large-serving regional medical center, a large-serving higher education institution that's huge, okay? That needs their own campus kind of setting. They'll find that as close to an interchange as they can possibly get, and you'll see that. Then you've got, you're still your big, your box or your large users' estate. You couldn't accommodate under any circumstances in the downtown area, okay? It just, it wouldn't work. You'd have, you'd destroy the character of your community if you in fact did that. They have a tendency and will not locate downtown. They locate again near interchanges. And ancillary retail related to them, but it's typically because, you know, you've got new development, they need AAA, tenants, if they can get them in there, which means that, you know, they're changed, okay, with the deep pockets or other things like that. So that's, they go there. That's where that kind of operation goes. Let's look at your retail market. Bottom line is, people, some people say, "Well, nobody has any money here, okay? Nobody spends any money." Well, you're alive, okay? You have to consume food. You have to consume lots of things that are in the retail categories, okay? You do, okay? Now, what we did was take our numbers that we did a few years ago in a study for you, and we updated them based upon changes in consumer spending. We didn't change the household numbers we were working with or anything like that. Just how the consumer has changed in the last three years and how they're spending their money. And we came out with some new numbers for you. You can't see this table, you don't need to. What it says though, is that about 2.4, your community supports 2.4 million square feet of space in 2015. Now, some of that space is in Grand Rapids. Some of that space is in Charlotteville, okay? Some of that space is in Mackinac. Some of that space is in Aruba or Cancun or anywhere else where you may go and spend money. Some of it is in some entity that you buy something off of online that's not located here, okay? So a lot of it goes out the door, okay? But you support 2.4 million square feet of space in total as a community, not just the city, but your small region, your micro-region that you're in here. Now, I want to take and just go into some categories that are important to you and what could happen in an interchange or is likely to happen, and what you, what the impact and the implication of that to downtown and what the real opportunities are. So now, I want to deal with eating and drinking category. That's not food you go to buy in Myers or Family Fair or anybody like that, okay? That's when you go out to eat, or drink, okay? Or go, okay? On whatever basis you do it. You support about 210,000 square feet of space in that category when you're at home, when you're not at home, okay? What happens is, that chain store is going to go to an interchange, okay? Your non-chain store, your pub, your restaurant that has its own chef, okay? Who has an established reputation. Your whatever, your cafe where you go for the morning for... reputation, your whatever, your cafe where you go for the morning for coffee and whatever, they're gonna locate in a downtown area, they're doing it all over the country, they've done it here. You have a number of good examples here, and you've had at least one or two in the last couple of years that have opened up, because that's where the demand is. They're different, they're unique. They're different than that other thing. They're not a Red Lobster, okay? If I'm gonna go to drink and party tonight on St. Patrick's Day, again, am I gonna go to the Red Lobster, or Applebee's, or am I gonna go to a pub downtown? Where you've created an environment, okay, and for that kind of business. You know where 20 is, same, you're gonna make same decision I am. General merchandise, that's the biggies, that's the box stores, the department stores, the junior department stores, all those big entities that are out there, the Myers of the world, et cetera. We have about 700,000 square feet of space that we support everywhere, okay, in that category. Well, when you start to look at that, what does that mean? It means that if, we have Myers right now, that is a combination of a number of things. If you look at the discount department store, we've got 400,000 square feet of space that we're supporting. Myers is nowhere near that size, actually one of the smaller Myers at this point in time. There's probably additional opportunity there, again, kind of store that's not gonna fit into the downtown area. Your people are supporting right now, they're just spending that money elsewhere. Um, variety stores, same thing, another 50,000 square feet. Uh, the department stores, which we have none here, okay, 175,000 square feet, the most, if, and I'm not saying this is what's gonna happen, so don't misread me, and I'm gonna use names that doesn't employ, that I know that they're interested in the area, but probably, you know, let's say a Kohl's, okay, which would go into a new development someplace. They're not that large, okay? So, you have some gaps in your market right now that aren't here, so you're really not attracting any of that money or dollars. Drug stores, okay? Hardware store. Let's take that one as a good example of who gets affected and who doesn't get affected. We have a local hardware store downtown, it's really not a hardware store anymore, okay? Who do you wanna call yourself, John? What do you call yourself at this point? Uh, we're fine, so he's not really. Okay, right, you're not really hardware, okay, or anything like that at this moment in time. He provides a service. We couldn't figure out how long Home Depot did here, it's been a long time. He survived and thrived through that process. Let's assume now there's somebody who tries, every place in this country to come in where Home Depot's located, okay? It's like in the old days, if you had a McDonald's, there was a chain called Burger King that used to try to come across the street from it, or whatever. Well, there's Lowe's, okay, and Lowe's, and Lowe's and Home Depot will duke it out with each other, okay? And they did duke it out with each other all over this country. They're both huge operations, you know, some stores become quote-unquote "underperforming", they try to work on them to bring them up, you know, let them duke it out with each other. Does that have any backbone job?
No.
None whatsoever, okay? And some people look at it, and I'll use an example that was given to me the other day, okay, well, I don't believe that, okay? Why don't I believe that? Well, let's say there's, well, there's 10,000 people who live in Cadillac itself, okay, inside the city, okay? That's roughly your population. Well, let's say 5,000 of you use Home Depot. The other 5,000 use John and somebody else. And let's say Lowe's comes in. Are they gonna battle for those other 5,000 people? No, they're operating the identical service that Home Depot does. Which one's different? You're gonna throw them up in the air. So, they're gonna battle over the same 5,000 people, not over the other people that are already doing something different, decide that's not what they wanna do. So, there's no loss there, and you have to look at who you're really competing with. If we had another pub that opened up in downtown like the one here, and there's been several food establishments that have opened up since I was here a few years ago, it's okay, okay? And if they, if somebody builds another restaurant out the road, that is a national chain restaurant, they'll try to get their business with people coming off the road, they'll get some business from somebody else that's already doing the same thing in the community, but they're not gonna take it from that pub, 'cause the pub's unique and different. It's that, really, really that simple. So, I look at the hardware, and then I look at the miscellaneous category, and the bottom line is, there are opportunities here, they will, that, who's the belt that really has absolutely no impact on downtown? Because you got, that impact was felt years ago, when the first wave came in. The second wave is gonna duke it out with the first wave. And whoever survives, you and I don't need to take that someone unless they own stock at Home Depot and Lowe's, okay, to see who it's gonna be, or Target, or Kohl's, or whoever stock we own, okay? We really don't care too much, and what happens here in Cadillac is not gonna affect the overall mainstream of those stores anyway. So, let's assume for a moment that development, a new development occurs at an interchange, you got two of them, okay, here, and irrespective of which one it is, okay? Transient accommodation, that's a hotel. Another hotel comes in. This place I'm staying at may lose some business, it may not. It may be the day, because if they promote the thing properly, they could draw more people off the interchange, okay, and do a viable business. Period. They're not, anything, any neat Ben breakfast, any neat, anything like that is not in competition with them, okay? They're doing something very different. So, does that hurt downtown? No. Okay, in fact, what it does is, if they got another 100 rooms, and they're filled, if another 100 to 150 people, they can come downtown, if they know there's a downtown here, to shop, or to eat at a restaurant, or just to hang out, whatever, go see an event, go see an activity. New housing, net new housing, irrespective of the form. And, you know, my assumption is, right now, given the market situation that I described and that changes is occurring, a lot of new housing that would be built would be rental-oriented, okay? Uh, doesn't mean low income, doesn't mean anything like that, means rental-oriented property, okay, because of that generational shift that I talked about. Who loses by having new rooftops in the area? The one thing any retailer looks at is the number of rooftops. Okay, so if I add rooftops, who gains? Everybody gains, and that, it gives this person another opportunity to bring a new person in that they don't have right now, et cetera. So, if it's got a housing component, terrific, housing's likely to go at interchange. Let's say it's got a box store. Is it possible that they could draw from a larger area, and I'll use the one, and they're not coming, they wouldn't come here under any circumstance, we wouldn't meet their criteria. Anybody know what IKEA is? Okay? I mean, if IKEA came and located here, they would draw from such a huge market area, you'd have so many people coming in here who never even knew Cadillac existed, okay, as an opportunity to get them in your door, okay, under any circumstances. So, it's just one example, and, you know, there's, if somebody comes in who, and, who's the clothing store that?
Or J's? TJ Maxx?
Yeah, TJ Maxx. TJ Maxx, the company that owns TJ Maxx owns lots of these other big clothing discount stores that you see, okay? If their store is doing well, they're not gonna look to bring in the Marshalls, okay, or the Ross Dress for Less, or one of the other establishments that, they just changed the name. It's essentially the same entity, okay? It's a different kind of establishment. They would, they might look too. Again, does that have any impact on the downtown? No, except for if they could bring more people in from outside the area on a more regular basis, and I say, "Well, I went here to buy something, let's go get something to eat." And they know you're there, they come downtown, okay? Or I've got a service that they want to get, or they need to get city service, et cetera. It just gives them one more activity and one more opportunity for you. So, they're, they will battle with each other for market share, they're not taking the market share any longer away. You've been there, done that, that's in your past. Um, and downtown will never compete for those dollars anymore, and hasn't here for a long time. And so, that's not gonna change. Ancillary activity, again, they might have a restaurant or two, but it's not gonna be a unique restaurant, it's gonna be a chain restaurant. They have to finance their deal. They, they can't, they can't finance it, they're independent, they've got no credit, and they tell them they're gonna pay the rent, they can't get the space built, 'cause no bank's gonna lend them the money to do that, whoever it is. So, that's just being realistic and very, very simple. What I wanted to do, and I could've gone through hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of these, just to show you that there are lots of other examples, and believe it or not, I believe your downtown is very successful, okay? You're, you may not feel it, but your vacancy rates are very low. Drive around other places in Michigan. Drive around other places outside of Michigan, and you'll see what I'm talking about, okay? Um, and again, that investment that you've all made in this community is fabulous, and more of it coming. You look at yourself in the mirror, you'll see that what I'm saying to you, yeah, you took that hit before, okay? It really doesn't, if Home Depot and Lowe's, if the Lowe's were to come in here, or Menards, they won't battle it, so, you know, they're fighting over the same dollar now, okay? Not, not you. Uh, a place called Aberdeen Merrill, they have 12,000 people versus 10,000 people, okay? They do not actually have as large a hinterland, okay, a population around them as you do, okay? It's actually smaller than market, okay, an overall market. But there, they have Target, Walmart, Home Depot, and others, okay? Their downtown, there's just some pictures of it taken in the last year, you know, they've got banks, okay, there's a headquarters of banks, they fill those top stories. And by the way, you're saying, "Well, he doesn't know what he's talking about, right? There's vacancies all over downtown." A lot of your vacant space is on the upper floors. If this were, if this didn't have the character that it had, it wasn't individual buildings, and all that space was in one building, okay? I guarantee you it would be filled with housing right now, okay, or something else. The problem is the focal laws and all the other things that we've created for safety reasons make it very difficult, when you can only build three units, and how do they get out? You know, you need to build an extra way for them to get out for fire reasons, et cetera. It just becomes very, very difficult to use those upper story spaces. Aberdeen, very successful in spite of that. They still have some retail, just like you do downtown. They continue to thrive, they continue to see investment by the private sector, okay, in their area. Here's another one I just pulled out, this is a project we've been working with the community for about two years now, it's in Kingston, New York. And I purposely, the first two I took, is, these climates are very similar to yours, okay, in a lot of ways, so you can't say, 'cause the third one, I'm gonna move you out of your climate, okay? The third one, you know, their downtown is called Uptown, okay, which is interesting in and of itself, okay? Um, but lots of investment, it's, if you look at it, it's, you know, historic, different kind of building, kind of area, and yes, they have some retail there, they have some arts and artist activity that have moved in to the area, they've got some activity on the second floors, a lot of their second floors are still vacant. They're doing just fine, there's people out on the street, there's activities that are going on, and there's businesses that are alive there and well. And they've got Sam's Club, Walmart, Target, Home Depot, Kohl's, Burlington Code Factory, and others, okay? And they've made it through. Then I'm gonna move you to a warm climate, you know, which I, we all wish it would've been like yesterday, today, okay? Tarpon Springs. And I purposely brought Tarpon Springs in because it doesn't have any population in it, it just draws people into it, okay? What does it have? It's got water, just like you do, okay? Um, that's really, and it's got a history. That's really, it's two primary components. And it lives on bringing people into it all the time with one kind of restaurant or another, or they'll take people out, you know, they have little boat rides you can go on, or bigger boat rides you can go on out of there, so there's stuff for the kids to do, et cetera. They're creating a family kind of atmosphere, and very successful, and right outside of them, they got every major operation that you can possibly think of. So what is downtown Cadillac tomorrow? Okay? Well, you look, again, you see, you took the hit. You've metamorphosed, they're continuing to change. It's going to have services. And I can tell you what I would do in downtown, Marcus and Jerry and everybody's always getting, and the mayor's always getting upset with me, okay, I'll speak my mind and I'll tell you the truth. I don't understand, we got the prime property here, some of the prime property in this city of the highest value, and we're here in it tonight. Now, we should be in downtown, but I'm not sure we should be where we are, okay? I think it would be more advantageous in the downtown if this were operating in something else other than municipal services. It's not just you, this is all over Michigan, I never did understand why that happened. There must've been a reason in history for why it happened, okay? But, duh, you know, you're gonna have services, you got services, you've got accountants, you've got tax people, you've got attorneys, you're gonna have municipal services that stay in the downtown area and never move them out. Um, entertain, at least the ones that bring people in, like this facility, where you've gotta pay your taxes or somebody wants to come in to do something. Uh, entertainment, you're seeing that evolution of that, okay? Um, what was the name of the place we had lunch?
Clam Lake Beer Company.
Okay? Relatively new. Um, nice place, it's, it's not there just to offer you the food. That's why, you know, it's, it's just a cold place, okay? It's that, that evolution of retail along with entertainment, okay? And I bet you, if we all go over there, when we get out of here tonight, that it's gonna boom, okay? And so will the other restaurants that are offering something special tonight, versus if it was Applebee's, okay, out in some highway area, it won't be doing the business. Um, so that food service directly linked into that entertainment. Arts and culture, you're already doing that through events, that can involve more here in the downtown areas for sure. We did a recent survey, it's the first time this has ever happened to me, here in a, an area in Michigan. We just completed a survey recently of households in the area, and we, and we asked a number of people who said they were gonna move in the next five years to a new house. Why were they gonna move? Well, they were getting older, they didn't wanna stay in their existing unit. They wanted to stay in the area that they were in, there really was no opportunities for them, so they told us what they were looking for. Um, in addition to that, there are other people who were younger in this area because it's somewhat near a higher education institution. So they have a younger population, again, they said they were gonna move. Many of them because of their link to that education institution, wanted to stay in the area, okay? They can't, there's no housing there for them at this moment in time. The number one thing was they wanted a walkable community. They wanted walkable characteristics. It's the first time schools didn't come out as number one in any survey we've ever done anywhere in this country. And that's that transition that is occurring in population. They've got those two markets going for them, okay? And so, that's that change that has occurred, first time that that's ever happened to us. Young households and older households as residents, those are your growth markets. You've got the older ones, we need to establish more of the younger population, give them a reason for living, working, and being here. Um, family activities, that's what you're, that's this environment, the more that you're spending the money on creating, so that you could bring families in, not just from Cadillac, but from the larger geographic area, and you give them something to do, and they spend their money. And the key is to get the kids, okay, 'cause what if it's the grandchildren and the children? If you bring them in, you'll get the money out of the people who they're with, okay, 'cause they'll do anything for them. It's the way it is, the way it's always been, the way it's gonna continue to be. So, family activities. Niche retail, you're, you're past the point where you're gonna duplicate or try and compete, whether it's a Myers, or a Home Depot, or a Kohl's, or a this one. No, you gotta do your own thing in a neat way. That's what has made you, that's what's got you where it is right now, and where you're gonna continue to go. Uh, reconfigured space opportunities, I already mentioned that, I won't get to the mayor, you know, too badly at this point in time, but you've got some golden opportunities here. You really, really do, to create even more intensive activity here in the downtown area. Has nothing to do with anything that might occur at a, you know, at an interchange someplace, at either one of your two interchanges. Um, that's it. I was, okay, let's group out right on schedule.
I want you to open it up for comments and questions.
Yes, comments, questions, talk. Tell me a crazy. Tell me why.
Have you done any looking at the demographics of what we've got going on here actually?
Yes.
The fact that we've got a, we have more data from Westford County?
Yes, yes, we did look into demographics, but, you know, as far as we developed, okay, came from those demographics. We were, we were under contract two, three years ago, I don't know what the hell the window was, and we looked at the demographics, and yes, it's not just Westford County, okay, it's this entire region of Michigan where you're seeing that happen, but I gotta tell you, it's not just, um...
Well, it's a national trend for the...
What?
Uh... Well, it's a national trend for the, uh, migration out of the smaller communities into the city. You drive through any of these towns in the Midwest and you see empty downtown.
Which you don't have.
No, but we do have a number of other things here. We've subsidized, uh, we've got a number of subsidized, uh, housing arrangements, which is good for people who need housing too, for people who don't have money to spend. Uh, have you done anything with the makeup or the composition?
Yes, yes, we did, we did three years ago when we looked at it and I said, to the best of my knowledge, you know, the trends haven't changed, they haven't reversed themselves. So any trend, that's like I said, we updated those figures on the spending, okay, based upon the data that we had had three years ago or two years ago when we looked at this before.
We've got, or this is a community that's dependent on a very few industries. We've got maybe two or three or four strong employers here. Two of them go out, then it goes into an economic meltdown.
And that was, that was true, first of all, you've been very lucky, okay?
You definitely been lucky that you've been through.
You've been very fortunate that your industries have, came through a very bad time and survived the process, okay? And those industries are gonna continue to metamorph化s and change, okay? And this is when, when, you know, if you wanna change the dynamics here, okay, you need to add. And as I said, when you look at what's happening...
Like what can you possibly add when you've got a declining population base and a declining economic base?
You don't necessarily have a, what you have is a, what I call a stable economic base, okay? Those industries, those industries survive, okay, they made it through, they're not adding employment, okay? They're not adding employment because they're not gonna add employment. What you need is to bring in additional activity that is gonna serve this larger region. You would look at outside of here as the big boys.
Oh, nonsense. Nobody comes here. Everyone's looking for a city up the road.
We have a project right now in, as I mentioned, in the Canadian Lakes area, okay? And with the, with the, the largest property owner in that area who owns essentially everything down there is saying, gee, we wanna look at Cadillac and we wanna do and take what Cadillac has done, okay? When we go, we did surveys, we're working, I set up in Charlevoix, okay, even up that far up.
Charlevoix and Traverse City and all along the Upper Bay there has money people, money people.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, the people, the people come and they know, they come through and they know Cadillac, okay? And this, this community is not dying. It is stable, it is going through the same metamorph化s everybody else is, but if I can get someone that's doing 3D printing, okay, that's gonna make the shirt that you and I have on our back, okay, for this market, okay, in the future and be able to sell to Myers and be able to sell to, to, uh, DJ Max, okay, and be able to sell to the store that's downtown, okay, and be able to sell directly to me, that person doesn't, that entity doesn't exist here right now. There's no reason that entity can't evolve as the world is changing around.
And they could plunk themselves downtown in one of our empty buildings down in the north end.
And they would. I'm not saying they wouldn't go out to an interchange, they would be downtown. That's why you have opportunities here. And you have opportunities, you know, from, from a housing perspective standpoint because you have lost a lot, there's a youth drain, a youth brain drain, as it's so, so steep as it's called, okay? You can bring, if, if I've got an opportunity for somebody to open a business like that, given the opportunities being created about, by what you already have here, it's not new. That opportunity didn't exist though, two years ago. It didn't, it doesn't exist today, but will tomorrow, that you bring those people in.
I don't disagree that there's gonna be an evolution of that, but that has nothing to do preserving your downtown.
Sure does. Space needs. Who would've thought Baker College would've built student housing a few years ago here? Baker College, it has expanded. They've expanded, you know, when we did the work before, they immediately picked up on the agricultural stuff, that research and development to do for and training people for that activity. They immediately, but we were still doing the study. They picked up on it and they started meeting with us to talk about it. There's lots of opportunities that we haven't, we haven't pursued, and why we, it's not the government, okay? It's we, from a private sector standpoint, haven't quite gotten to do it yet, okay? But the opportunity exists to do it. And it's going to exist. And it can happen right now. If I want a, if I live in this community today, okay, and I do no longer want to take care of my single family home, okay, because my kids are grown, but I wanna continue to live in this community, why shouldn't I live downtown? Where I can walk around 24/7, 365. Yeah, it's cold sometimes, that's what I'm used to. I've always lived in the cold. We're not providing that right now for them.
Oh, there's plenty of housing down there. There's lots of, there's a lot of, within the city limits.
Yes.
How do you tell people that come off the interstate, stay at Hampton Inn? How do you tell them we have a downtown and what's there?
Okay, first of all, first of all, like I said, off that interstate, okay, or off that 131, okay? There ought to be signage that says, there's a lake, there's a lakefront, there's activities here. There isn't right now. Again, if I got, if I, when I, if I didn't know you were here, I got out of my car, checked in, the hotel, now what am I gonna do for dinner? Okay? I'll go to the, there's one place right next to it? That's it? Okay? I don't even know. So you have to, one, get the proper signage that tells people, and you can promote downtown, but you could promote historic downtown. You could promote the lakefront, okay, where chances are, in, as most communities, there is something that's going on along the lakefront. That's step one, okay? Step two is, is your marketing, okay? I didn't, there's nothing in my hotel and I'm not criticizing your tourism or dimension bureau or jewelry or anybody like that. There was nothing, I, there was, there's this huge thing of sending me all over the place. None of it sends me to downtown Cadillac. Not a one.
In other words, what you're saying, what you said in your presentation, that what's good for downtown is good for the businesses at the interchange and vice versa?
Vice versa, yes. Because they're not, they're not really competing with each other. They're complementary. They're, they're doing their thing, you're doing your thing. And the two things are not the same, like I said. The brew pub that opened up, okay, that we went to for lunch day is not gonna locate out at the interchange. It doesn't fit. It doesn't work there. It does downtown. And another question is coming. Still got time, there's problems to you, 26:30.
But, um, not necessarily to, to beat a dead horse, but the last thing that you said, I think we can't, maybe, I think it would be helpful for us to really understand the significance of that, this sort of philosophy, which is how the, the different type of development that your downtown has, the unique mom and pop type shops, the boutique niche type stores, how that's complementary to your community, it helps develop the character, maintain the character of your community. Whereas typical developments that you might find off of major highway interchanges, while you hope would be complementary to your community in sorts, really complement one another, not, not compete, they don't conflict with one another. So if, if I'm reiterating what you're saying, someone might be attracted to Cadillac because there's some national chain store that they wanna go to that currently they're driving an hour and a half to get to. Now they don't have to do that. While they're here, you have to somehow convince them, show them, show them what you have to offer in your town and then perhaps vice versa.
Mark, just, and let me take that one step further. There are any number of examples of downtowns in the United States. I can think of a couple of them right off my head. Originally, um, they had, like I said, they still have attractive, physically attractive downtown, but the market became, the downtown became so successful that all of a sudden the chain store wanted to move in, the chain stores started to move in. And then they passed legislation that said, well, if you have more than two operations or you can't, you can't come in, okay? Because it started to ruin the character of that uniqueness of that, of what made it cool, okay? If I can go to, you know, the Gap, okay? If I can go to the Gap, and that's what happened with downtowns. That's the metamorph化s that occurred. At one point in time, they were the only game in town and then the identical store went, moved somewhere else to get closer to where the population was. The downtown at that point in time didn't change and it went through this, this downward spiral in a lot of places because of the competition. But it's no longer a competition with those because now it's neat and different. And that's what you have today. You have neat and different and you can have more neat and different. And supporting that neat and different can be additional housing, can probably be additional office space that is associated with that manufacturing facility you would never know is really manufacturing anything. And they don't take an exorbitant amount of, what do they use electricity, just like you and I do? Because that printer looks exactly the way it is. And they can produce that clothing for that person that is, is buying it here. They can produce, I mean, they produce every, they're starting to produce everything. I saw a vehicle, okay, that was produced, it was all plastic, okay? It met the standards of state highways, okay? It doesn't meet the interstate highway standard, okay, for crash, okay? They haven't figured that out. The only things on it that wasn't produced by a 3D printing machine, okay, were the tires and the, the things that the tires are put on, the rest of it was all produced with 3D printing. There's a great, uh, commercial with GE where it talks about, it says, my mother does this, my mother works here, my mother works there. And at the very end, folks, there is a, this machine and it's time lapse photography and they're building their jet engines. GE is the world's largest builder of jet engines. Right from, and you're seeing it built right in front of your eyes. No people about, which is, which is the negative side of it, but it's being built just like that. And, you know, these opportunities exist out there. They, they're opportunities that, if you look, you are well located here because of, you're right off of 131. You provide quality of life for somebody to live here, okay? That really hasn't been promoted to the extent that it should. We've got lakefront, you can go boating out there, et cetera, today, you know? Lakes are frozen over pretty bad the last couple of years, okay? But that too will get passed in the not too distant future. You've got a quality of life, you've got an opportunity for somebody to serve within a reasonable top, within a reasonable drive distance via a truck or something like that, okay? A very substantial population. And for those people to say, well, you know, we don't have the money, okay, like, you know, a Charlevoix might have or somebody like that, while we may not have that second home market and that indigenous second home market at this point in time, which is where their money rests, we already have a manufacturing base here. We already have a reputation for that kinda thing. So if I'm a new one, okay, I've got the opportunity because it's evolving and I don't need the large labor force anymore, but I can serve a very large geographic area very easily from here, within a couple hour drive of anywhere, as you know, to, to yourself, it's less than two hours to get to Grand Rapids, all the way up into the UP for all intent purposes. And while the population is spread out, it still buys goods and services, okay? And it delivers goods and services. Yes, ma'am?
So, um, with all of the clients that you have, I'm sure that one of the popular themes within a lot of those communities is we don't have the money to make these things happen. So what are some of the best creative and collaborative things that you've seen different communities do to make things happen in their community?
Okay, um, there are, there are things that can be done, okay, to provide incentives or resources, okay? Some of them are financial, some of them are not financial, okay? You can make it relatively easier, you can make it very difficult for somebody to build, okay? If you make it relatively easy for them, doing any kind of activity is about risk, whether it's opening a business or whatever, there's a risk that includes. Anytime you can minimize the risk, sometimes that means minimizing the timeframe that they work in. Sometimes it means providing incentives. It may be possible, I don't know, I don't, but there may be, there is some government support for it. You may be able to set up crowdfunding activity to finance somebody to go into one of these businesses.
We've talked about that.
Okay? You know, there are new, again, there's these evolving mechanisms right now, okay, that you may be able to tap into. You can get, there are foundations, okay? The Kaufman Foundation out of, down in Missouri, um, out of Kansas City area, works all over the United States to help with that entrepreneurial thing. Baker College, okay, can provide, you've got some, some base things here that can help you to, to get the right people in the room, to cause that coalition to occur, to make something happen.
And I agree with that and I think that we're doing some of those things, but what I'm asking you is, you know, in, in all of the areas that you travel, what are those creative and collaborative things that you see out there that we're not doing here?
Um, I think it's probably marketing more than anything else, I just don't, I think that's a fundamental issue. I think you, you're, you're not presenting somebody with, with a real picture of what the real opportunity is, okay, and the quality of life that you provide, okay? And I think that that's one of the fundamental issues that you have and you need to pursue those things you have been pursuing, like the crowdfunding issue, et cetera, because they are the future. They are the future of financing, okay? Um, and you need to, if a developer, I don't even know that anybody's come in here, seriously, if somebody wants to do something to entertain, I can tell you what, number one, you don't do. And in all probability, they need sort of word, well, I make sure I extract sufficient revenue in terms of taxes, et cetera, to cover my costs and to get something out of it. We've worked with other developers and we've said, you know, if they're in the housing business, come look at downtown at the same time. See if you can do something down here while you do something somewhere else. Uh, it's that kind of marketing that I don't think, that handholding process that I don't think has occurred here real well. Like I said, that's the signage issue. Now, I know that there was one change that's been made, okay, with respect to a street name change, okay? But there's more. There's no signs out there that tell me you even exist. Um, I don't, why? There, it just, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And those are small things, but they can make a big difference. If I'm driving up to Mackinac for a family vacation and everybody wants to stop, okay, right now, I can pull off that road because I see a sign that says Hampton Inn Holiday Express, right? And I can pull right off there, or I can see a sign that says there's a lakefront down here, I won't give my kids a chance to get out of the car for a while and walk around and, and, you know, something. We're not doing that.
But don't you, don't you think that people with the technology aids, that people are doing all of that homework before they ever get in their car?
And they're not looking for the signs.
Right.
Johnny in the backseat is going through his phone, looking to us going out of that town.
I mean, technology has provided us the opportunity to market not...
You're looking for signs, you're telling them to be...
You know where your end destination is, okay? But when you have kids, okay, you don't always know when that kid needs to stop, okay? Or, I hate to put it on the other end of the spectrum too, when you're a senior, you don't always know when you need to stop, okay? For the same reasons often, that kid needs to stop, okay? And right now, the, the only place that they're gonna stop is, you know, is right at that interchange, okay? So, so no, we're not gonna become a destination that is, I'm gonna stay overnight and I'm gonna stay there, okay? But getting them in to do something, you know, letting them know if it's a Thursday, you know, or whenever day, which, because I've forgotten which day it is, that you have your farmer's market in season, okay, downtown. But knowing that there's a farmer's market that day, that's not the kinda thing that you program when you, when you go online, okay, and you program your trip out. But it's the kinda thing you say, oh, let's try it for a few minutes, see, you know, let's get, pick something up, okay? Um, so it's, I'm, I'm not replay, yes, I, you recognize what tech, that, again, the technology with the internet, you know, has done for us and to us, okay? But there are still those intervening opportunities that occur all the time and you pick a piece of the pie off. Uh, so it's not everything, like I said, the future of crowdfunding... The future of crowdfunding, okay, there's regulations that are in the transition again right now from the federal level, because when they first allowed crowdfunding to occur, you had to have a minimum amount of assets in order to be able to get in, you know? And the real purpose of crowdfunding was to give, you always hear the story that if you had a thousand dollars in you and invested it in Microsoft, back when it was in the garage of, you know, of, what do you call it, his house, okay, Bill Gates' house, then you'd have twenty million dollars today, okay, from that thousand-dollar investment. But guess what? We never had that opportunity to, to put that thousand dollars into something. What they're doing, at the first phase when they came out and said, "Well, you had to have a certain level of assets in order to invest in," but that's changing too, because you can buy the product that the person's talking about. You can, you can get in, you know, they sell it for fifty dollars and you get in that one. There's a lot of different ways now, and the, the regulations are changing to afford that and make it more opportunity so that it's open to the average person who doesn't have a vast amount of resources to say, "You know, that's a really good product. I like that, okay? And I learned about it on the internet." And they don't care whether it's in Cadillac, Michigan, or in North Dakota someplace. So that opportunity exists, you need to pursue those opportunities. I think you need to do a little bit better marketing than what you're doing right now. And again, how many hotel rooms do I have right now, okay, up there at the interchange? I know about, these three hotels.
And we know the number. I think that the Visitors Bureau here does a fantastic job of understanding how many beds we have, and when they're filled, and the opportunity to fill them.
And again, I think, again, if I, as coming in as an, quote unquote, an outsider today, I would never, I could not have come down here because I didn't know there was a down So it's tweaking. I, you know, I think Julie does a real good job too, okay? Not being critical of anybody, but there's always more. There's always more, especially things that don't cost you a lot of money, that you can do to boost things. And again, I would pursue the crowdfunding. If somebody comes in here with a development proposal, talk to them about perhaps doing something downtown, something, et cetera. They need something from you, and you want something from them. And so it's quick pro quo. And, you know, it works!
Yes. I, I just, I've heard, you know, people comment on how they travel and see stuff, and I get what you're saying. We travel exactly the way that you talk about. We always have with our kids. We always look for a spot that has a park, or some type of beach, or something that I can do on the cheap just to get out and do something. And I-
And then they get back in the car, fall asleep, and then they have to-
Yeah, that's right. And you keep doing it. But, you know, I'm, I'm not from Cadillac. I've only been here, you know, fifteen, eighteen years. And, and it's one thing that I've noticed as a transplant, that there are not a lot of things here that are marketed about what we have to offer, the trails, the rails, the hiking paths. Everything around this region, it's very hard, as you come into this town, to see what we really have to offer. So I, I get what you're saying, and I think it is a major hole in, in what we're trying to do here. And I never thought about the box stores and big developments and interchanges not being in competition with, you know, the downtown niches and the brew pubs and the depots and, you know, things like that in the downtown areas. That's a new concept for me, and it's enlightened. So I, I understand what you're saying. And I think, you know, rather than to be defensive about the job that we're not doing, this is a great opportunity to look at how we can improve. Not that we're not doing a good job now, but there are some holes in our plan, and we can improve and make this, you know, a better, a better area, just like that. I mean, the answer, there's no, there's nothing there. I mean, anybody in this room can see that and testify to that. So, you know, I, I think it's a, a good step in the right direction, our third example.
I agree with what Dave shared. As a senior citizen, I hang out in the park a lot in summer, and I love the fountain, that's my favorite place. And you can see visitors as they come. The kids are excited to play in the splash and the water, and start taking pictures and all you have to do is ask them, "Where are you from? Are you new in town?" And you get all kinds of compliments and accolades about how beautiful Cadillac is and how beautiful the park and the Zell Town is on the lake. And I think we just need to accentuate the positives, and the negative of this kind fade away.
And there's been significant private sector investment just the last couple of years, Debbie, if you think about it. From the place you mentioned over at the depot, to the restaurant that I went to for lunch, to a restaurant called Seraphipides, okay, which is an operation that opened up. I mean, you can go out there on the street and you can see it.
Oh, you got a, you got a housing complex full of college students.
Students right there.
Where are they gonna go? The brew pub and what else? You know, what else is there to do? They're not gonna be hanging at burners, you know what I mean? They're-
And they don't, and they don't wanna go out to Applebee's, they have a-
No, we're not. We're gonna get on our telly bike and ride around the lake, or run, or go to the skate park, or whatever. So, you know, they wanna be consolidated down here, and that's, it's a huge opportunity that we're missing out on.
Well, and to, to your point, you know, when I was talking about, I think that the Visitors Bureau has done a tremendous job. Marcus and I were just talking a little bit, and, you know, maybe key to what you're saying to us is that, you know, we need to do a better job of marketing. I believe we have the materials, but how do we get it out to the general public? You know, Marcus was saying mailing all of that wonderful stuff that they've put together is expensive, you know? And we have easy access to it because of our works in the city, but people in general in the community maybe don't. So how do we do a better job of getting that information?
The problem being, this gentleman's right, is not by that mailing any longer, it's through that electronic. It doesn't cost, it doesn't have that cost associated with it.
And again, that's why you don't have things about business downtown at Hampton Inn, is the business people downtown will not invest and not advertise if you put it out there. And it's too expensive.
And when, when, and if there's, if there's a screen up there with a television, okay, that is promoting things and advertising, okay? That doesn't cost the same as if I have to print that printed material, which is a much more expensive process. So there are ways of tweaking what you're doing right now. And there's some new things that are different, and I'll go back, and you have to look, okay? Look at the most successful operations, some of the most successful entertainment, and that's the business you're in. You can call it what you want, whether it's recreation or sitting, you know, it's a form of entertainment today, okay? And you're created in your downtown, okay? Probably the premier entertainment entity in the United States is a company called Disney, okay? Disney, it changes everything all the time. They're constantly tweaking everything that they do. Change, that's what they continually look at and how they tweak it. I don't know if this has occurred, okay? I know that a few years ago, when we did the previous work, we had a great database from the Visitor Intervention Bureau of people that called up to get materials, et cetera, to find out what was going on in Cadillac and everything. At the time, and I don't know if Julie has changed this or has been able to change, we never knew if any of those people came. We never knew who came. Can we target our market if we can figure out who actually came? Again, kids drive. McDonald's success was based with kids driven. The Disney's of the world, it's kids driven. That doesn't mean you can't have fun. If you're seventy years old, go to Disney, okay? But it's driven by the kid. That stop that has to be made is often driven by the kid. They need to get out, they need to exercise, they need to walk around. They can't sit in the car driving from Detroit, okay, to Mackinac, okay, till they get on the boat there because it's too long for them, you know? They, or, or from Chicago, okay? Whatever the case may be, they need to get out, they need to do things.
Sure, the dog.
Or the dog, right, at the dock. So definitely, right, okay? I mean, people, it is, and, and again, you just, it, there's, there's a little bit more that can be done that doesn't cost a whole lot, that can help you a lot. And you don't need to worry about what happens at the interchange, you need to worry about how effective you are at what you're doing, and always tweak and tweak and tweak to make yourself more effective. So that when this gentleman now sees next year a hundred people that he can talk to and figure out where they're coming from, as he's sitting out there on that bench. You know, and, and you've, and you've got landmass here that can be developed, and you've got, if you've, listen, if somebody, if you've got development interests, and I, and I know, and I know nothing about any of this, okay? I don't know, you know, who, what, where, or if anybody really has done anything serious or anything new has been proposed in any serious way. But what I can tell you is, if you've got development interest, chances are they're not from Cadillac, okay? Because they see something in Cadillac that somebody that may have the same money has here and doesn't really see that opportunity, okay? They see an opportunity, okay? And they've got money that they're coming in and willing to spend to, to take a risk, okay, and spend that money. You know, again, if somebody from outside is looking at you saying, "Hm, I think there's a real opportunity there." And so it's that outside entity that may lead to someone else coming in. And, you know, they have other people, they're successful. As I said, if TJ Maxx came in, and TJ Maxx is doing the sales volume that they thought they were gonna do, they may start looking at bringing in Marshalls, or Ross Dress for Less, or one of the other twenty-seven different chains at their own, because it worked. So, you know, there's obviously opportu, if somebody's looking, if, if you've had the investing you've had in downtown, okay, in the last few years, and you had, and you've got other people willing to invest outside of downtown in this community, there's a reason for that. They feel, they, they don't wanna lose their money, they wanna make money. So anybody who's doing that feels that there is a real opportunity here. It's here, and there it is.
Yes. Something that, I know tonight's topic is primarily focused on the city of Cadillac Downtown, but I know being here, it's, it's often referred to as Cadillac, Cadillac West. So, you know, it's only, it's like we're the same city, but we're two separate cities on opposite sides of the lake. So how does something like that play into that? You know, to, to this whole thing, that we, we try, and I know there's been attempts at working together collaboratively with businesses in Cadillac West and downtown, and I just, do you kind of, yeah, I can-
Stay away from that, or-
No, no, no. I, I can answer that in a couple ways. This really goes back to the work we did a few years ago here, okay? First off, in Michigan, Michigan, you know, has pushed tourism, which is a good thing, okay? I'm not being critical of it at all. You have an abundance of natural resources which play into that, okay? And they, they are great quality, et cetera. But I will tell you that those natural resources also represent other opportunities. They represent more tourism opportunities. And I don't think it ever showed up on paper, but, but I know we had some conversations. I mean, if, if I could take my kids, okay, my grandchildren, or whatever the case may be, out into the woods, and, well, I probably wouldn't see a real bear, but I could see bear claws marked on trees, okay? They would think that was cool as anything. Okay? So there's more expansion in the tourism using those, but there's also every pharmaceutical, every supplement. Most of your research on human disease today that is being done, okay, revolves around either two things, either agricultural production or the natural resources, okay, that exist. And we, we haven't used any of that yet, we haven't made the attempt. That's why when we, that's why Baker College changed when we said, "Look, the agriculture has dynamite opportunity associated with R and D, but there's nobody here that knows even how to work in a lab." So train them to do it. There are places in this state where there's tremendous amount of agricultural research that goes on. But you've got the natural resources, you've got, you've got these national forests, you know, all around you up here. Does anybody even talk about those, or mention those? I never hear it. Why? So again, it's back to that area, you know, it used to be we had some resorts over there that were relatively high-function for many years, okay? One, I understand, maybe having some investment associated with the other one seems to be floundering a lot. A lot of times when a building flounders, or a property flounders, there's a host of reasons with it that have nothing to do with the market, that have nothing to do with whether there's an opportunity there. Sometimes someone gets older and say, "Look, it's not really worth it to me, and, and there's no offspring that are gonna come in and take it over, and it just sits." I can't tell you how many buildings I have seen in downtown areas in some very nice or very affluent, high-income areas, where the building just sits, and the building sits because the owner doesn't wanna do anything with it. They don't wanna invest, but they don't wanna sell it. Or, I know of one case where they want one point five million dollars for a building that's worth three hundred thousand dollars. And they're gonna sell it until they die. I mean, that's what it amounts to, unless you're really worth something, you know? So I think that, you know, there's an opportunity to create something over there, okay, that is different than what we have on this side of the lake. And the two can be complementary to each other, again, just like that, you know, that interchange versus the other. It doesn't have to be the same thing, and that would bring in more people into the area. You just need to find people who, who believe in the concept, can, can generate the money to be able to do it. And you need willing people who are willing to, to work, who own the property, et cetera, are willing to work with it, work through the property. A lot of times we recommend you go out and recruit investors or a developer to a project who doesn't end up buying the property, but doing things with somebody who owns the property because their equity is in it in the land and whatever's there right now, and, and they, they really end up doing the thing, but that person gets a return, you know, for that equity that they have injected into the project, but they're not willing to sell it, so they're not really selling. They're, they're a partner in a new venture, without them taking anything out of the property. That can happen too. So, but again, that's, that's all part of what I call marketing, okay? That's recruiting that entity to come in and to, to invest that money. But I think there's different opportunities overall in that. West Cadillac, okay, we get spoken like it's another totally different community, but it has different ideas. Yes?
I have a quick question. Have your, has your group done any studies? Return on investment for small businesses. Let's say a small businessman downtown, John just recently, for example, changed his exterior sign. The businessman that has got the same exterior sign they've had for forty years, it's faded, it is no longer attractive. Or the business you go into that hasn't changed the lighting in God knows how long. Or the restaurant that has the same menu they had fifteen years ago, changing the, the exterior lighting, or maybe changing that plate glass window that's been there ever since the building was almost built into something more visibly fashionable. Have you done any studies or turn on investment for small business people?
If it won't change, if that person hasn't done it, okay, chances are, you can, you can put every figure you want in their face, you're not gonna convince them that they shouldn't invest that money. It is sometimes in that case the wrong person, okay, that owns the establishment or the building, or whatever the case we're talking about, okay? You can offer them financial incentives sometimes, and a lot of people have done that, that's the side grant programs and, and things like that. But, but you know what? They think, "Why? You know, it doesn't bring any return to me, so I'm not gonna do it." It goes back to, I said, I probably will use the quote again, my father told me there were two things that were an asset, debt and taxes. I learned that there were three, debt, taxes, and change. And if you don't do the latter, you're gonna do the former, okay? And that's a, they're, they're dying. Now, the problem with downtowns, and this isn't, this is not unique to Cadillac, but Cadillac has the same thing. There's two kinds, I, I always tell you, there's two kinds of businesses, okay? There's one that is a hobby business, okay? And there are other, that is a legitimate business that is able to support at least one family, okay? And is a primary source of income. Many, many businesses in downtown are hobby businesses. There was no real business plan, they never tweak, they just, they just sit there because it's what they wanna do. I remember a project years ago in a place called Seddville, Michigan, and they had a mayor there, who, former mayor, who had owned the, she was mayor for like twenty-some years, some, she owned a children's clothing store in the downtown area. Seddville's a very small community, okay? And she was, they, everybody said, "The fu-" And she was, they, everybody said, the future is all boutiques, boutique retailers in the downtown area, and she was the example. And if you really, if you ever went to talk to her, she never even draw the salary out of the business. Her, her husband was a physician, this gave her something she always was, that she wanted to do, she did it for years, and one day she retired from it, and the business closed up, she never made any money. Her rent's were low, she, she broke even, she didn't, it didn't cost her anything, and that's how she liked spending her time. Versus, you know, somebody that has a real business downtown. So you gotta first determine whether or not they're, you know, whether or not they're really a hobby business or a real business. And if they're a real business, you gotta get, you gotta really sit down and talk to the person, determine why they haven't made changes when neighbors have, okay? And inevitably, also, it comes down to not, you could show, again, show them all of the numbers you want in the world, but they're tired, there's nobody, there's no lineage, there's no family member that's gonna come and take over the business, they, you know, maybe they're approaching retirement, or they got another five or so years to go, you know, they're doing other things, and they don't want, they just plain don't want to. It has nothing to do with market or demand for goods and services. That is normal. Most businesses that close off, whether it's downtown or elsewhere in this country, it's not a result of a lack of demand for the goods and services that are being offered. It's because somebody retires or gets sick and they can no longer continue to operate it, there was no one that, no one knocked on their door and said, oh, I'll buy that from you, okay? And, or they weren't willing to take paper on the business, okay, because, because most small businesses, you know, we used to joke and say they had three or four sets of books, there was one that they gave to the government, there was one that they told their spouse, there was one, you know, there were just, you know, all these different variations. And I like to put it, if you're in business, and all businesses are the same, you wanna maximize benefits and minimize income, okay? I mean, that's really what it's about, linear business, okay? That's the way our country operates, that's the way it works. Big businesses do it by having goggles of money overseas and keeping it there, so they're, you know, smaller businesses, you know, they do different things. So that's what it is. I mean, so, you know, you've gotta get into the head of that individual person and find out what really it is. And a lot of times, it's unfortunate, there's nothing you can do about it. You can, you could give them money for free, and they still won't do it, because they don't want it. We had a project one time in a place-
Howard.
Yes?
It's past seven.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna, we, we promise people we get them out here at seven, so.
Be fucking serious.
Howard will stick around a while in case somebody has a, wants to ask him a question, but I wanna thank you folks for coming tonight, and I don't know what you're gonna do for the rest of the evening, but it's St. Patty's Day, so whatever you do, be safe.
Be safe.